Our consultants share preliminary findings with district leadership identifying key themes around academic excellence, equity, and student well-being. There are still a few more groups that the consultants would like to hear from, so we have upcoming focus groups scheduled. I want to thank everyone who has contributed their voice to this important work. Last Thursday, St. Louis Park Middle School hosted its first multicultural showcase. Students, families, and staff came together to share performances during the school day. The event highlighted the importance of creating spaces where every student's identity is honored and celebrated. Thank you to the staff and volunteers who made this event such a meaningful and joyful experience. Additionally, the middle school and high school have upcoming theater performances of Singing in the Rain and Little Women. These are just a few of the things that are happening across the district. Yesterday, I held a superintendent question and answer session for families. I heard directly from families and answered questions about district initiatives, including updates on the strategic plan, academic priorities, and other areas of community interest. We hope to foster open dialogue and strengthen partnerships between families and our schools. I encourage all families to attend and participate in future opportunities. There are many more opportunities for engagement within our schools. We are beginning the search process for our principal for Susan Lindgren Elementary School. Principal Pollak has spent many years with the district and his presence will be missed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hines, for that superintendent's report. That brings us up to number six on our agenda, which is discussion items. And the first thing we have on our discussion items tonight is community education budget presentation. And it's that you, Director Magnusson, and-
And Director Howard.
And Director Howard, you're coming to the table here. I believe that we had a preview of this at our last study session, too. This is an abridged version.
Yes, so we'll just run through this, so we have some context for the action items later.
Thank you.
So, good evening, Chair Cox, Superintendent Carla Hines, and members of the board. We're glad to be here tonight to take you through a review of the community ed and school nutrition budgets. So we just want to make sure that you're prepared and have the context for taking action. And as Chair Cox said, we've reviewed this previously. This is just a reminder that we're deep into the budget process, and one of the important things we do is update the current budget. So we're preparing for the audit, and then as we prepare the budgets for next year. You can see, here we are in April, almost to the final approvals of the budget, which will happen in June. So we'll quickly move through the community service budget. And overall, it's an improved budget from original, which we have been anticipating. Under Director Howard's leadership, the community service program has flourished and gone from a negative fund balance to a really nice positive fund balance. So we're thankful for that. On the revenue side, in overall community ed, revenue will be increasing by $686,000. The majority of that is in tuition and fees, and that was because of conservative budgeting around the Kids Place program. And I don't know if you want to add any context around that. And you'll see the other side of that here in expenses, where we held back on some salaries, knowing that we were waiting to see if these programs would fill and we could hire the commensurate staff.
Right. And then just some additional cost containment strategies we had in place. And we were able to expand some of our offerings with a particular, a couple of particular sites, as well as Kids Place preschool. Something that also required additional staffing. So we were able to take some participants from the waitlist and add staffing.
And I'm just going to put back real quick, so there's a $686,000 increase in revenue, offset by a $535,000 increase in expenses. So the total fund balance is increasing for community education by $357,000. And as we move to school nutrition, Tammy was here last time we met. The school nutrition revenue is increasing. We're recognizing the new federal rates and the changes to state and local revenue based on free meals in the state of Minnesota. We added this slide. We thought we had it in there last time. We described what's happened with the state rates and how large the state reimbursement is now and what an important part that is of school nutrition, and we're hopeful that that will remain in place. It's a really important part of a student's day, and it's helped our participation and I believe the ease of students' experience in the lunchrooms, having free meals. So we're very thankful for that. Expenditures are going up by $169,000. A lot of that is in that supplies area. We're watching food prices. We're watching potential tariffs and other things that might impact the prices of ingredients. And so we're just being mindful of that budget. So the entire school nutrition fund balance is going up also by $357,000. It's important to note that these are two funds outside of the general fund. We cannot take this money and move it to the general fund. However, if either school nutrition or community ed go into the negative, we must take general fund money and move it into those funds because we cannot close them with negative balances. So these are vital, strong programs in both community ed and school nutrition that serve our community and our students in really important ways. And the really strong budget management by both Tammy and by Director Howard saved the general fund and really serves students and families. So here's our next steps. Tonight later, we're asking the board to approve these changes to the budget. And then we'll be coming forward with the budget for next year, fiscal year 2026, for all funds on June 10th for a review, and then to be approved on June 24th.
Can I ask a quick question? This is relevant to something that came up in our listening session earlier. So if we were to have reduced or lost some special education funding, can the community service and school nutrition budget, like for example, for Kids Place, if you have kids who require special education support while they're at Kids Place, can that fund balance be used for that?
We already have a tax levy for the students who we serve in Kids Place with a disability. So there's a tax levy, and those separate funds are a part of the community service fund. But beyond, that's already a placeholder in the community.
So they're categorical funds specifically for the particular program use. But we do get funded for children with disabilities, and we do apply that currently to our Kids Place program. So that's how we're able to increase staffing to support students that have special needs.
If there were further cuts, there is not any flexibility under current law to take funds from community ed or school nutrition. Now, there's banter about creating more flexibility so that fund balances might be moved into the general fund, but that would take a change in law.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Again, we've heard a lot of this, which just informs sort of the conversation that we've heard here. One big takeaway I had that I just want to echo because it's just how much Tammy's work is to get our meals in at a reimbursable budget and how helpful that is because that means then we've got, and not just a meal, just a nutritious, nice, attractive meal, from what I understand, too. And that just has a benefit because we're giving good food and we're getting fully reimbursed for that, or reimbursed to the maximum there. And I just really appreciate that, that we have somebody who's sticking their time to do that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I don't have questions, but you know, we already talked about it because a lot of community members ask me about, we have a bus station in community ed and the nutrition. Those are restricted funds. We can only use, I think we should keep reminding that all the time.
Maybe we can build in a disclaimer in each board presentation and right at the beginning, a big slide that says, "These are the funds that can and cannot be used." It is tricky. It's very complicated. And I think we always say, "Thank you for navigating us through the complications." And that it's not just you, it's the small staff of people that are doing that, looking at that stuff and making sure that we're following the letter of the law and making sure that we're being smart and all sorts of things there, and it's not easy. So we appreciate that very much. All right. Unless there's anything else, then we'll move on to our construction update. Thank you, Director Howard, and thank you, Director Magnusson. And we'll bring up Jim Layman and our facilities and safety manager. And you have some, Magnusson?
I do.
Construction representative?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Superintendent Hines, Chair Cox, fellow members of the board. Thank you for this time. I brought with me tonight Richard Yalvy, who is one of our superintendents from Knutson Construction. And rather than listen to me talk, we're going to let him talk this time. So we have a brief construction update. It's kind of an exciting time. We're back into the thick of a lot of construction going back on. Depending on which way you came in, you would have noticed the stadium is gone. The stands are gone, and it's an empty shell out there right now. Aquila is going up. We'll let him talk about this as we move forward here, so.
Hines of Cox, board members, appreciate and thank you for the opportunity to have you come and talk with you of what's going on. If you have questions on each project, just let me know. First up will be the Community Center Central Project. Sorry, I'm getting out of myself. Central Community Center Project. This one is a renovation of the pool locker rooms and the pool. And then Jim, locker room started, and then if you go to the next slide, Jim. Or is this the? So this is down in the locker room area. This is like the main joint hallway. We're moving into the finish stages down there. So this is what a finished wall will look like when we clean it up a bit. And this is the joint area will lead to three separate locker room areas. There'll be a men's, a women's, and a family in the middle. And then next slide. And then here's a look of how far we're pretty much getting close to the done stages for all the restrooms and the bathrooms in there. The flooring is currently going in this week as we speak. So we're getting real close to being done with there. We do have a new lift that will provide for handicap accessibility from the locker room area up to the pool deck area.
This was one of the bigger challenges we encountered with this age of the building and the pool and the location. Part of the referendum was to make sure that the pool, the community spoke that they wanted to have handicap accessibility to that. So that lift will lower them down into a central station between all the lockers that whether it's a family member, whether it's a male or female, they can, they go into their lockers from there off of the lift, so.
Yep. And that lift, I mean, what I'm trying to remember is that, like, because this building has been pieced together over time, right? I think you were sort of suggesting that even like just because things weren't level, they're just weren't like natural places because it's just been pieced together. And somebody thought at one point, "Well, we can fit a pool here. We'll sink it four feet," and all sorts of things, right?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at it, where the bottle of water you see right there is actually the pool deck. So, and it's actually sitting at the, and then the metal at the bottom is actually the level of the locker room. So the only difference is, you know, five feet here, but it's a big five feet. And it was a real challenge, both structurally, engineering, and everything else, just to find the location that this would work for all the locker rooms and getting to the pool. So we lost a little bit of storage up in the pool area, but in doing so, we made sure that, you know, the community members and everybody has access to our pool amount.
Jim is correct. That was a very fine balancing act between everything, meeting clearances and everything to fit that in and have that work. Next picture. So here's a shot of the pool. We are pretty much done in this room. We have the new diving blocks on. They've refurbished the gutter and recaulked it. There's the new ADA chair in the wear. We're just at a kind of a pause in this room until we're ready to refill the pool in a little bit here. And then next slide. And then with this project also, here's, we're far along in the stages of installing new pool equipment and mechanicals for the pool. So it'll be pretty much close to a new infrastructure for that pool inside. And then here's some shots of the main floor gym. This will become, so this was the old basketball court gym, but this is going to become the new gymnastics gym. And this shot also gives you a good look into the new openings that you see for the small annex area gymnasium room that'll be available. And I believe we're going to be framing that in soon, and they'll be open to that space. And this is actually a really good structure shot of the old history of the building, where what you're seeing there would have been the old auditorium archway from the backstage to the front of the house, and you'd be in the front of the house looking. So I kind of thought it was an interesting shot showing the history of the building and where we're going with it. And then here is a shot picture of the, what will become now the new gymnasium, or basketball gym, and a few other sports, pickleball, and a couple of badminton and other things will be available in there. And they're starting to put new HVAC and things in there, and padding will go in soon, so we're on.
This was the only gymnastics, right?
This is the gymnastics gym, so. All our, all the equipment will be up in this area here that you're seeing where the lifts are currently. So rather than, when we had a gymnastics meet, it was kind of challenging for us because not only did we have the one lower gym was full of equipment, we had to bring up the pommel horse, the uneven bars, set them up, get them up there, and it was a big challenge for us. So now, when we're completed with this project, gymnastics will be in one location and everything will be in one location.
I remember my daughter.
So you had to run up and down the steps? No, there will be no more of that, so.
And next project up was going to be the Aquila addition and remodel. This is about 15,000 square foot addition along with new spaces for kindergarten classrooms and stuff. We'll kind of expand more if you want to go to the slides, Jim. This is the current timeline that we are looking at for Aquila. We're start, we will, are anticipating the start to the remodel portion when school ends inside the building. Our goal is to turn over the office and sensory resource areas in the middle of August to support them for starter school activities. And then have the cafeteria area, which is the high, most intensive amount of work for the summer, be done right before, right, we want to have that completed. And it's going to, we're projecting it'll take us right up to the wire there. Then, moving into the fall, October is the timeframe. We are projecting to have the building complete from a standpoint of getting a certificate of occupancy, get it final cleaned and ready so that the district can then, in the month of November, the infrastructure, furniture, technology items that will go into the classrooms, get that set up, and then a move will happen. And the ultimate goal, Jim, I believe, is you guys want to have students in there on January 5th when they return from break.
Yeah. So one of the bigger challenges we faced was, we had to bid this out in two separate phases. First was the phase for the addition, and second phase was for interior work and that. This, there was a little bit of confusion between the city, us, and the watershed district, all trying to get this September 1 date in place. In the meantime, with many discussions with Knutson, myself, and Patricia, it came pretty apparent that the new addition was going to struggle to be opened in Dine. So the focus then became, or is now, to make sure that we don't interrupt school, that they can start on time. They will still have the interior renovations done, ready for them to start school while we finish up the new addition and then move into it on a gradual basis. The next logical timeframe came after winter break, that it would be set up, ready for them to go. So when they came back from winter break, they were going to be starting, kindergarten would be starting in their new classrooms, and we would have everything functional. Rather than, we looked at the intention of potentially working overtime and working Saturdays and Sundays. It didn't seem to be fiscally responsible to do that right now. The dollar amount was rather shocking, let's put it that way, when you start adding overtime and Saturdays and Sundays to the union contracts. So the decision, along with Maria and Dr. Hines, was, let's make sure we've got the interior of the building, the structure ready to go for them, and we can concentrate. They've been operating without the new kindergarten rooms, so we really aren't going to be, the one challenge we're going to have to do is focus is where because the band room currently is going to be the new corridor or part of them, the cafeteria leading into the new addition. So we're going to, we're going to find a space for band in the interim while the new addition is being completed.
Were there any surprises from the watershed district, like we had?
None from the watershed. So far, we were fortunate. I think we did have to go about a foot deeper and maybe a little bit wider on our rain garden that we have out there. The bigger pushback ironically was from the city, and they lost the softball field for the summer. You know, which realistically, the district actually owns. That is our land, and we have an MOU with the city. And I, after discussions with Jim and some of the city folks, it was like, "We've got to have space because I can't take up the playground for lay down area for construction materials." And by saying, "We'll return it back to what it was," they were happy with that.
So that's the field that's on our side of?
Correct.
But there's still fields on?
Yes, we did.
In Aquila Park?
Yes, we didn't touch Aquila Park. We are just using the current field. And if you've driven by there, you can see a lot of equipment down there right now, so.
Do we have to put an awning on the field there?
No.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. We do, we do, we get it that other agencies are involved with this. And it's sort of, you know, I have a connection to the watershed district. I used to be more connected with them and understand their mission and stuff, but it is frustrating sometimes when we have a lot of these things that we don't navigate to. So we get it. We get it. Did you?
Yeah, I think there's a couple of questions here. Trying to think of everything that's changing internally in the current structure for the start of next year. Are there any other temporary spatial constraints that?
Because we are, like I said, with, we are making some new sped areas over there, creating some more quiet areas, quiet rooms, if you will, for special needs students that need to have that area. So those will be done before the start of school. That is our mission, is to make sure that those are done. And I'm pretty much giving Knutson the ultimatum that we don't have a choice here. Those are going to be done, and we will be ready for September 2nd, actually, is when school starts next year, so.
Because I kind of remember the whole parking lot.
Did you?
Yes.
I think we had a-
Central. I have like, can we give like timeline, same way you gave October?
So we are going to be, pool and locker rooms are going to be operational and available roughly about a week after the 4th of July. And then the intention is to have substantially complete with the remainder of the gym, the training room, the boardroom, the gymnastics gym, and the annex gym. The parking lot out here is getting redone. A lot of exterior doors are being replaced and upgraded. That is substantial completion, I believe, is August 29th on that. But we will still be needing the boardroom and that training room because of the amount of technology going into that. We are looking at potentially another, about another month to make sure that we're set up and ready for that. We were hoping, like I said, it's, we're stretched right now, thin on that. And if you saw the pictures, if I go back to the gym picture, being the auditorium, one of the major constraints we were running into was engineering wasn't signing off on the load restriction on the floor, which used to be the seating. So when they took the seating out, they built the second level there to match the level of the stage. And we can't find any prints that said how they built that. And so engineering was like, "I can't sign off on us driving our lifts across there." We've got to, we ended up rerouting a lot of ductwork because we couldn't go across this area. And so that was one of our other challenges with that gymnasium slash stage here, auditorium that used to be there, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I was being flippant, but I'm also very serious. Like, are we, you know, we had to delay the start of school. Wasn't it this year? Because of parking? Because the parking didn't get?
No, it was, no, no. What was the, because we lost power. The power shut down two days.
So, I mean, are we, is there, will there be a secret contingency plan just in case we can't open Aquila? You should be giving the-
No, I'm not. The interior portion of it, I'm not worried. We've gone over this schedule time and time again to make sure that we can reach those dates. And what the terminology that Knutson uses a lot, and I've come to accustomed to, is called a summer slam. This is a pretty customary interior job for a summer slam to make sure you're done and in time for the start of school. We are, don't have a lot of structural load bearing issues that we're going to have to deal with with Aquila, and that was part of an EV engineering, value engineering that we did a little bit later on with Knutson and Cunningham Design because initial design had a clear story in the cafeteria, a two-story clear story, all glass wall. And we started looking at that, and I asked the question early on and said, "How are we going to do this and still be ready for school?" So we revamped the roof line to bring it down to the current roof line with a, I'll say, an arched spurt in there, such that you'll still have more light in there, but yet we're not going to have a full two-story clear glass in there simply because with all the structure that we would have to have done, Knutson, myself, and Cunningham reluctantly agreed that the schedule was not going to make it. So we brought it back to within an area, we believe, and are confident that cafeteria and interior structures will be completed on time.
And in the remodeled areas, it's going to take priority. We have our workflow set up that we're going to be tackling the office areas in that first, and then the cafeteria, and then move into the addition stuff during. So that, that area's going to take priority because that is the most urgent goal for you guys to have a successful start of school.
And this is actually what the remodeled floor plan will look like. So essentially, we took out room, I don't know if I got it right, right over here. It was room 208, which was a sped room. And now that becomes part of the office area and conference rooms and more offices for staff. And then over, on this one over here is the revised sped area with the quiet rooms. We are adding bathroom over there for sped students.
The north, yeah, the north room has a new bathroom. It's enlarged a little bit to accommodate special needs.
And some things like that, too, that we talked about, or is that the lift for some of the?
The higher lift of that, yeah. Yep, that'll be a part of this as well, yes.
And then the inclusive restrooms on the cafeteria side.
And that, yeah. So with the new cafeteria, over in this area right here, we have put, what is that, five, six new inclusive restrooms over there?
Like our high school?
Yep, exactly. They'll look and be modeled after the high school, so.
And then next one is a slide that's going to show the addition floor plan. So the four kindergarten classrooms are out on the west. The new music room's on the north side. The Kids Place, which I'm understanding is like the daycare, before and after care, where my kids go to the white care program.
Currently, Kids Place is operating out of pretty much a closet over there. So they have their own space, their own storage.
Let's be clear, the kids aren't in a classroom at school.
No, no.
The program, the staffing, the offices, the storage are in it.
So we're doing that. And then also on the right, which we call Flex, this whole area over here is the new storm shelter, which is about, the panels are all up, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct. Storm shelter's up. We're finishing up some detailing of the panels, and we'll be looking to push forward on doing that. We can, actually, we have some pictures if we want to go through. So this is a picture about the end of, that's the beginning of March-ish, first week of March-ish, where we completed the soil correction. And then the next couple, three pictures are, so this is a look of the storm shelter area with the foundation going in, with all the form work in, and we poured very shortly. Here is a picture of the classroom area with the foundation in and the center walls being poured. And then I got another picture kind of showing we're backfilling the foundation. And here's a look at the center commons where this will lead into the new cafeteria. And then I do have a couple pictures of, here is an action picture of the company setting precast panels. And then this was about the time when I turned the presentation in of how far it is, and we are fully complete now with that structure. And we're starting to, no, that's, then we're starting to, interior and backup CMU walls in the classroom area are going up right now as we speak. So that's kind of a little update of where Aquila's at. High school stadium. This project is taking down the old home site bleachers, building a storage space for school district for storing things. And then also a team room storage or storm shelter area underneath, new bleachers on top. And then replacement of the turf field and field sidewalks and improvements around on that side. And then, so this, go ahead.
Bannons, yes.
Yes, so. The, the structure on the right, the right hatched in has four bathrooms for the team rooms and we're, um, any sport can go in at halftime or at recess and, and meet there and have restroom facilities. There's three restrooms that were added on the storage side. That is, I believe Jim, that's where the fan stadium access is.
Correct.
And then the new bleachers will be set on top of that.
I have a question about the team rooms.
Yeah.
This might be a logistic thing more for Jim or something like that. Is that stuff, when, if somebody rents the field or uses a field, do they get full access to that stuff or is that sort of?
Um, that's still under discussion, so. We haven't decided how we want.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Of course, say, the turf look like new, can we reuse it?
And you know, and it's funny because they, they, what they've done is we're recycling the, the fill in there. So they spent the last week going and essentially vacuuming out all the sand and the rubber material, which we will reuse on the new one going down. So, um, and if, you know, he walked me through it and he says, you're at the right time when we did this because he started showing micro splits in the fiber on the seams. Uh, and that would have become, uh, far more problematic in a year or two if we weren't doing this right now. The average lifespan of a turf field is eight to 10 years. We're already at 12 with that. So we've got our, we've, we've gone beyond technically our expectancy of that. And I, I counted that to, you know, our ground staff taking good care of it, making sure that we do have them out doing their compression tests on an annual basis and doing a once over every, every, every once a year, so.
And then here's some renderings of what the design from Pope did for what they anticipate the new stadium shelter and structure will look like. Uh, front view and that, and then, and then here, uh, took a picture, we already took, taken the press box off and stored it on the side. And then, actually, this was when they started demoing the bleachers last week and now as Jim said, the bleachers are entirely gone. And this is a picture of what the actual precast panels will look like. Most of which you'll see on the exterior is going to be the panel on the left with the brick and then the behind the scenes stuff will have the.
The city's requiring that we have the panel on the left facing anywhere that's readily viewable from a street, so.
And then the last project is the.
Can I do anything about the stadium just to, to, while we, while we are on it, the, um, taking out of the bleachers, they've been similarly, some questions about their lifespan too, that they take it, but, but also some, mostly functionality.
Yeah, functionality because they're not, they weren't ADA compliant and now we are fully ADA compliant. Um, we have a much better ramp system going up that allows, uh, people to use it. Um, in the current stadium that we had, we had one area where they could be. Now, whatever section students, parents, grandparents want to be, we have an area, uh, set out for them to be, if you're, if you're in a wheelchair, that they will actually be in the section.
I think that was one key thing that I actually heard and seen with the football games is that we had, um, a kid who wanted to participate and be with his peers in the cheering section and didn't have that option to do that.
And now.
And, and now that's a part of it. I also know that like some people that I know, including myself, appreciate that we'll have some railings.
Yes.
Going up and down the stairs too, because that's been a challenge for some people too, which is not necessarily a full accessibility thing, but proves to us how accessibility benefits us.
Yes. And that was the other point I was going to bring up is yes, there'll be railings on every section, set of stairs going up and down, so.
Yeah, yeah. I've watched people trip and hog, that are using other ways.
And it was an awkward rise overrun scenario, so it wasn't a natural step going up there. So you kind of half-stepped it, half-stepped it down.
Same going down and you're not quite like.
And it wasn't so much going, it was going down, you know, that you had the challenge, so.
Okay.
And I, and I just want to clarify with you, um, for those folks who may not have been here going, attending, uh, school board meetings since September, that, um, one, the bucket of money for infrastructure is different than the bucket of money that goes to operating costs like teachers and things like that. And then my understanding, because I get a lot of questions from swim parents for the swim team, is that the, the changes in the stadium were necessary and so we had to make necessary changes. So in addition to those necessary changes, a couple of things happened. One, St. Louis Park, the city came up with some requirements, am I correct? And then also, um, we also are just taking for the field replacement. It was because of all of the other construction, we did a.
We were, we've been fortunate, the cost savings we've had, that we've been able to wrap. But also there was also deferred maintenance in there and if we didn't do it now, that would have increased further down the road.
I think there's just a heightened awareness right now in our community about how we spend our money and that, um, we did not decide to do this on a whim.
No.
That it was a necessary change.
Yeah, it was, it was always in the, the bonding referendum that we went through. We expanded a little, we added the turf as part of that, just because we had hit the, the life expectancy of the turf and so.
And then the last one is the restroom remodel at the high school. And real quick, it's, we're just doing two restrooms, one on top of each other, so that we're going to be replacing the plumbing and infrastructure all the way throughout in the house. And it's just, it's going to be, uh, basically new finishes, new, um, plumbing, re-put back tile, tile walls, um, vanities and fixtures and.
Yes, so this is also, as we've talked before, we were going to try to get all 14 of the bathrooms done. Um, the challenge was we were going to initially try to do it with the project. We were just running out of time, um, and we couldn't get it done during that period of time. So what we did is we, these are going to be two of our, for lack of a better term, uh, initial experimental bathrooms to see how this design works. I mean, it's going to be very similar to what we currently have updated. Um, rather than singular hand sinks we have and those god awful round Bradley trough sinks, we're going to, this sink is going to look just like the one outside the inclusive restroom. So it'll be a solid surface, it'll be nice and clean, it will function properly. Um, you know, so, you know, the other reason we chose these two is because then that finishes off the A wing bathrooms because of the inclusive restrooms. First through third floor will be completed at that point in time. And then we'll systematically look at B wing and or C wing, whichever we feel is, uh, on the next. I anticipate this taking about two to three more years to get all the restrooms completed in, in the high school. Um, I, the other challenge with doing all is we would have to almost shut the building down again if we were going to go through and do all the restrooms, so it would be shut down for yet another summer. I think they've endured enough for the last two and a half years that it was a chance to get them back in there and let them use the great spaces that we've just completed, so.
I think if you can do these bathrooms for $400,000 for the next few years and we can adjust our school start.
So that's part of the, yeah.
Just kidding, I'm just kidding.
The latter, we'll be approving the bids for this, for this project, so.
Is it just a joke because it's the many things that we talk about, the many things that overlapping, things that we have to battle all the time and why, whatever. I'm not going to get into it anymore than that. Okay, other real questions, comments for people we, I think we, we interjected with a number during here, but are there any other comments? I think we're, we're just grateful to see that we continue to improve our facilities as, um, Vice Chairman, or, yeah, Vice Chairman Tini said like, uh, we are, um, we have different buckets of money. This, this is largely money that's coming from our taxpayers. We're appreciative of that, that this is money that they've said, yes, go ahead and update the facilities. It allows us to have great spaces and modern spaces and inviting spaces and inclusive spaces. Um, and also, um, comparable spaces to what we see at some of our other schools nearby that can have pretty, they have new builds and some other things too. So we know that we're limited with some of our structures, but we just, I think, appreciate. I, I don't know, I think I've seen this from, I was in the learning design team, as they called it back 15 years ago, when we're just looking at this stuff conceptually and we're like, what are we going to do? How are we ever going to get these buildings updated? And we're getting very close to being through all of them and getting completed and it takes time and energy, but we've had a lot of good thinking. That's all I can say, I'm shut up.
Just one quick question. Have we purchased pretty much everything that is going into these or are we going to be seeing?
We do always, in the project budget for each individual project we have, we always have a line item and it's called P, P and E, uh, or F, F and E, excuse me, sorry, not P, P. Furniture, fixtures and equipment. So there's usually a line item for every in there that we go ahead and, is it's furniture, if it's, uh, new equipment, if it's air handlers that I'm buying because I can find, you know, purchasing through the state contract rather than through a contractor, it's more efficient if I buy them directly and then they install them, um, so.
I guess what I'm really asking is are we anticipating tariff impact on our purchasing?
You know, I think we're early enough on that I haven't heard. The big one is going to be the furniture for Aquila. Um, and so far I think we've got our numbers in. Whether they're going to, like COVID, whether they hold to those or not, there's always a small caveat in their contract that says due to, you know, the forces beyond our control, you know, we may see increases in this. So far we are, they're telling me no, but we're still four months away from delivery date on that.
But it's good that we're at this point and not three years ago.
Correct, correct, so.
I just want to know if I can, like, as a child of the eighties, that round.
I'll save that if you like it, I'll, I can hold on to it.
People that might need a planter. And I was just appreciative that my daughter got to see what it looked like when I went to school by using those round things where you put your.
Your foot.
Step on it and then it squirts out and squirts all weird.
And, and I think there's only one left in the district that actually works out that way. We, some of them have upgraded to the electronic eye that when you wave your hand underneath it, it's supposed to come out. Well, those electronic eyes don't always work the greatest.
No, I, I know that from personal experience as well.
But I will save that for you and I'll put your name on it.
Go ahead, quick question.
Yeah.
Uh, you had talked about in the boardroom and training rooms, some technology constraints. Could you, uh, be able to share what some of that technology is?
Just the overall, um, because it has a lot of, uh, technology going in there with wireless microphones, TVs, monitors, uh, cameras, that sort of thing that, you know, we want to make sure that, that is up and running and running right before we open that up.
Everything that will make this kind of experience a lot better for the community that we currently have.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes, yes, we won't have that.
I think a lot of people will be appreciative of that.
So.
I think you should make it acoustically designed so we never need any of the, I'm just kidding. But, all right, any, any other questions, comments? Really can appreciate all the hard work you're doing here, things are looking really great and we, I think we're getting, I don't think we're hearing any blowback, so to speak, or feedback from the community that's negative about this. Um, but I just really appreciate the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, you're really kind words and appreciate your time.
All right, that brings us up to consent agenda, which has a number of things on it. Our payroll, accounts payable, disbursements, electric fund transfers, BMO bank charges, investment holdings, donations, personnel minutes, and then, um, the second reading of votes, uh, for policies in the 100, 200, 300 series, which we talked about, wait, that's a separate thing, sorry. Okay, sorry, so it is.
They're all on the consent agenda.
All right, yeah, that's what I thought, okay. And yeah, 70, yeah, okay. I was just, it said presenter and I got thrown by that, okay. Yes, these policies which we talked about last time, which were things that, um, that, oh my gosh.
Annual review.
Annual review that we had done just to look at things and things that were kind of non-controversial and we can always change them if we need to later on, but we wanted to bring them up to speed to make sure that they were good and be advised. Okay, it is recommended that the school board approve the consent agenda with the following business and personnel items for the April 22nd, 2025 school board meeting as presented. Do we have a motion?
So.
Moved by Director Casey to have second.
Second.
Second by Director Williams. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass to seven zero, great. All right.
Can I just quick say, I know we don't really do a discussion on this, but this again goes back to the listening session, is that the donations, right? Because I just want to flag that we've got donations from some foundations, from the St. Louis Park American Legion, the Vikings. And we got a donation from an individual named Frank Johnson who donated $500 for Michelle Bryant, a social worker to buy supplies for the groups that she runs. And so there, there are opportunities out there for folks to donate. Draw attention to that.
And I will call out that if we ever as a board want to consider moving something out of the consent agenda permanently so that it's more recognizable, we can do that. There's some options for that. I think we should try to streamline things to keep things moving along, but understand that that can also have its negatives where things like that get missed, so.
But I think that a couple of people missed that the Minnesota Vikings donated money to our girls' black football team and Director Anderson, how many girls came up for black football?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
My daughter bring one.
Woo, that's amazing.
All right, any other?
Sorry to interrupt.
No, I appreciate it. Yeah, and like I said, if we want to talk more about some of these things, I think we should too. And whether we want to do some things or follow up, whether there's some other ways we should recognize that. It's built into this business meeting, but there's other ways we could be acknowledging that too as a board or as a district, right? All right, that does bring us up to seven E, um, which is.
Eight.
Eight A.
Oh, eight A, sorry. Okay, eight A, which is approval of the mid-year budget, um, school nutrition and community education. It is recommended that the school board approve the mid-year budget for school nutrition and community education. As presented, do I have a motion on that?
So.
Moved, uh, by Director Casey, I'll second that. And then that brings us up to discussion. Director McAdeson, is there anything else that you need? Do we have any other questions for Director McAdeson about this? Um, this is stuff that we've seen now twice, um, pretty straightforward. If there's no other comments, then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass to seven zero. Okay, that brings us up to eight B and it is recommended that the school board approve the acceptance of the health insurance provider and associated rates as presented. Um, and then there's a resolution that I need, that I need to read related to this too?
Yes.
Okay, so that is resolved that the school board of independent school district number 283 approves the self-funded rates for the district group health and dental insurance with the United Healthcare, UMR and Delta Dental for the 12-month period from July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026. So I'm going to do motion second and then we'll have discussion. Okay, so is there a motion on this?
Can you call, uh, can you call?
Yeah, well, can I get a motion to bring this to the table?
Oh.
Okay, moved, uh, by Director Ibrahim, do I have a second on this?
Second.
Second by, uh, Director Anderson. Okay, now discussion and Director Roy, if you would like to, if there's some more context you want to provide here, maybe, maybe to introduce it or?
Yes, so, um, good evening, members of the board.
Yeah.
Um, so each year, um, we, every two years, our insurance goes out to bid to the market. And, um, what ends up happening is we have an insurance committee that comes together. They meet once a month, it's made up of different members from throughout the, uh, employees throughout the district who represent, um, their employee groups and we come together and we monitor monthly the progress and what's happening on the self-insured plan. Um, and then every year, every two, two years, when it goes out to bid, the insurance committee comes together, they review the bids that come back. We had two different companies that were, that offered competitive bids this year, um, Blue Cross and Blue Shield and UMR. Um, and after reviewing the bids and consulting with One Digital, Chase Ambroda, who is our consultant that we work very closely with, it was recommended, um, that we stayed with UMR for a number of different reasons. And we're looking at about an eight percent increase in rates, um, which may seem high, but it actually is pretty low when you compare, uh, to other school districts, surrounding districts. Um, a lot of school districts are seeing double-digit increases. And technically we should have probably taken a little bit more of an increase, but because we've been managing the self-insured plan and the reserves, um, we have built up, they, they're recommending that our reserves be about forty, forty-five percent of our annual spend and we are, we're, we're a little bit higher than 45%. So we did do, we did, made an intentional decision to take the eight percent increase and we'll monitor that closely over the course of the next year to ensure the, the plan maintains and we'll reevaluate next year to see where we're at.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, did you have any other questions, Director Ibrahim? Not with that, okay. Other questions, comments? This has been, I think we, I don't know, Director Casey remembers like, I think, remembers the cost things and how.
Oh, we saw double-digit before we went self-funded, so this is just great news. Um, I mean, it does seem like high compared to what we've had in the past several years, but not compared to what we had before that. We had a lot of ups and downs. Um, so the, the percent that we've been able to hold has really helped us be much more, um, even, I guess, on the, on the increases. So, and you probably said this, but the, the group that makes the decision is made up of folks from all of our bargaining units and, okay.
Yep, and we're very intentional and actually tapped a couple on the shoulder just to make sure that we have continued representation across because I think getting that perspective of each employee, so, you know, they're not surprised when these things happen or we're not rolling these things out and people are asking what's going on. So, yeah, we've been getting good intentions most.
And appreciate all that. So we've had a motion and a second, any further discussion? Then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass the seven zero. All right. This brings us up to approval of high school restroom renovation bids. And this would be, I'm going to ask for a motion and second, then we can have discussion if we need that. It is recommended that the school board approve the high school restroom renovation project as presented. Do I have a motion to bring that forward? I'll move it. Do we have a second? Second by Director Anderson. Any questions? Do, is there anything that you want to offer? This is related to what we just saw, the renovation bids, exactly.
Yeah, and like I said, the total number came in about 15% more than what we expected. However, with, you know, this is where the tariffs may be ineffective because of supply chain. And so, that's where we are at right now.
Any other questions or comments about this discussion? All right, then, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes seven zero. Bring this up to board member updates. Thank you, everybody, for getting through all of that. Our regular business meeting here and which where we take care of all these business items. And, and it can seem very like boom, 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 but I think it's designed to be that way. So that brings us up to board member updates, which gives us an opportunity to get outside of that, to talk about anything else we want to about our connections into the community, particularly our liaison assignments or anything else that we're going to write updates on. So, and I'll open up the floor to my fellow board members.
I'll go. The, I sit on the senior advisory committee and several months ago, somebody said, hey, can we do, can we do shredding? And so shredding.
Shredding.
Yes. And because sometimes those big shredding events are like hard to get to. So Katie from the senior, senior advisor group, and they have pulled it all together. So there's going to be a free for all and it doesn't, you don't have to be a senior or member of Lenox. Free for all shredding event at Lenox Friday, May 16th in the parking lot, the lower parking lot at Lenox from 10 to 12. And you can bring up to five paper grocery bags of items to be shredded per vehicle. Please remove all paper clips and staples. So that is super exciting because it was just an idea that came out of the committee and they're making it happen. So that is a super helpful service, I think, that they're going to be able to do. So, May 16th.
Excellent.
I went to the multicultural night at the middle school last Thursday. I was able to see the jazz band perform "Music's Lovely" by Stevie Wonder. I thought it was beautiful and I thought they would love it to see, got to hear it. I wasn't able to stay long, but there were two sets of brave people that did duets and they did very beautifully doing it. And also the Somali dance. And I just loved the admiration from the crowd, from their, their peers and how they cheered them on and how like they were even, I think, more excited than the people performing for them just to see their peers. So that was lovely to see. Central clinic is going to be temporarily closed. It's not open during the summer months, but we are hosting a immunization clinic Wednesday, April 30th, two to six at the middle school. You can go to the district page for more information. And Susan Langbury has their last PTO meeting of the year next week on Tuesday, April 29th, 6:15 PM.
Hi, members. Director Abraham.
Yeah. I just, so when I, I'd, St. Louis Park Middle School Feminist and the community, tomorrow from 6 to 8, there will be a multicultural show. I don't know, is it the same one? I don't know, but it's going to be great.
They said a couple of their performers in China.
So it's happening tomorrow and it's open for all the community that's between 6 to 8.
Um, I have a couple. So start with, just an invitation for, thank you for staying for the board updates for everybody who stayed because sometimes this is when you hear about how we do go out into the community and we try to connect with folks. Aquila's carnival is this Sunday. If you've never been to Aquila's carnival, you should experience it because it's a lot of fun. Also, Aquila has an online auction going on right now and they have some fantastic prizes. I know because I have often participated in the Aquila online auction. And so I've gotten great facial products and hopefully my dog will get some, up your trainee. From a local thing. I also attended my first Brightworks assembly meeting and boy, was that really interesting. And I have a lot of learning that I need to do. There's a lot of learning, but I think my, if I had two takeaways or possibly three takeaways is, one, it was refreshing to be in a space with other board members from across the metro area who are experiencing everything that we're experiencing. So they're, have some anxiety as they watch the state legislature. There's some anxiety about the federal government and what the federal government is doing. So it was interesting to hear from them. My second takeaway is that I think with the REACT, we need to be patient in how it rolls out. My impression of Brightworks, and this is as a, not just as a board member, but also as a person who's in the classroom. They're building the support structures for REACT as they roll it out. So Brightworks is a, I forgot the word, it's corporate and collaborative of different areas that are trying to support schools as they roll out letters training, as they roll out training for our math programs, as they, they support extracurricular things through Spark Path, including the Young Authors Conference that I will be attending in a few weeks. So they did hit me up to be on the executive board right away. So I, I look forward to learning more. I think there's also some unease about how state funding is going to continue to support Brightworks, who supports districts and giving that really important professional development, professional learning to, to teachers. So, yeah, it was, I have a lot of learning that I got to do.
By the way, on the Brightworks topic, they are typically a co-presenter of the Fall AMSD Conference. And so if you, for fellow board members, any of us can attend that fall conference. And so if you're interested in learning more about Brightworks and/or AMSD, that's a great opportunity and to connect with other districts too. So just want to put that on your radar. And we're talking about an AMSD, don't want to go off this, I'll get back to you, but about what, if that, what, if we have ideas about what that conference should be about, I think they're still taking ideas and still are interested if people have thoughts about what those, what that could be. Okay, that's all I wanted to say about that. Back to you.
No, I mean, I guess the only other interesting thing is that they have a small part of Brightworks. There's a, they, they don't have every region, people in place to support every school district across the state yet. So they're getting there. And then the other thing, they have a mighty but very small group of culturally relevant trainers. It's like three people that they are, they're trying to hit all of the, all of the states and high needs for, for that. And I thought that, I was impressed with their presentation and their efforts because three people for the entire state of Minnesota seems a little understaffed.
Director Williams?
Yeah, I just had a couple of quick notes. Director Heinz already alluded to a couple of productions coming up. And I've seen a lot of signs in my neighborhood for a Peter Hilvar production coming up for Aladdin this coming week. So I'm excited for that. And then there's also a PTO meeting for Peter Hilvar coming up next week on Wednesday.
I don't know, I think that's everybody, my, I attended the final P and C meeting. I was one of four parents there that night. So I do encourage parents to show up for that. And I would say that one thought that somebody expressed was, that parents are worried if they come to it, they're going to get assigned committee work. And it really is, like I said, counselors or PTO meeting where you can come just to hear about what's going on. And we had a nice presentation by the social studies department about AP human geography, which came out of a coffee, the principal conversation where people were asking about it. I didn't see a lot of carryover of the people who were asking about it, people that were there. But it was a really great presentation and I found it really enlightening and, and just want people to be aware of that. So, and I know that I did, I think maybe you alluded to this little one that's coming up, that's starting this weekend and some other things going on at the high school. So I think that's, I think that's everything. I think, I can't remember between now and our last meeting, if we, Ramadan finished up right. I think we, we've celebrated the end of Ramadan and recognized that and some great things that we've done in our district in celebrating and recognizing all sorts of people here. I heard, I heard a lot of that tonight too, so.
Also Easter of the weekend.
And Easter, yes, and Easter as well. All right. If there's nothing else, then I will call this meeting adjourned to Adam.